Steve Owen.
Here.
Sherri Baron.
Here.
Bob Clark.
Yeah.
Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Will Stinkwitz.
Here.
And Lake Cam is recording the meeting. Is anyone else? Thank you. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, that's the problem. Okay. I'd like to indulge the committee and ask that we take a couple of items out of order. I want to discuss the calendar and the reentry plan and hold off on public comment until we've heard from the superintendent on the reentry plan. I also want to acknowledge that we've heard from a lot of people about reentry concerns and received emails and letters. I think almost all of those have had a response, Mr. Owen. Yes, thank you. So please know that those concerns have been read and are considered and will be considered as plans evolve. This is a moving target, but your concerns have been acknowledged and I want you to understand that we truly are listening. So with that, I'd like you to go into the discussion on the calendar first, and we have to vote on the calendar.
Absolutely. So we have two new business items, and the first item is my recommendation to accept the revised calendar that's presented before you. And the calendar is specific in relation to our recognition and really our consistent effort to try to support all families in the community. We noticed our first day of school conflicted with a religious holiday in the community. In the past, where we've had circumstances where religious holidays have fallen on a school day, it hasn't been the first day of school where students and children are meeting their teachers and students for the first day. So in lieu of that, it is my recommendation that we move the first day of school for all students from Tuesday, September 7th to Wednesday, September 8th. It will extend the school year by one year.
One day.
One year.
Don't give them a year.
That was last year where it felt like it was one year, one day. I'm sorry. So it'd be June 21st. It's recognized. It's my intent to make sure that a superintendent's corner gets put together on both these topics and both an email and phone call will go out to the community as it relates to the calendar and the other topic that we're going to discuss tonight. So there are no other items to change within that calendar. So it is my recommendation that the school committee, which needs to vote on the calendar, accept that revised calendar as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Owen.
Mr. Madeiras, is this based upon concerned parents in our district that have approached you on this?
No, I've had no contact with any community members in relation to concerns. It was really from my perspective, I create the calendar, so I don't blame the school committee whatsoever. It's my calendar that I present to you for vote and action. It was an oversight on my part to note that the first day, not to not recognize that the religious holiday exists because it always exists that time, but that it fell right on the first day of school.
Got it.
But we did not receive concerns or complaints. This is more proactive approach, consistent with our strategic plan to address our diverse community.
Okay. So and just why it extends to the 21st is we have to recognize the state holiday that is on the 20th.
That's correct.
Which is why technically it's extended out two days because the 20th is a holiday.
Yeah, calendar year, it's scheduled out. It's scheduled out one additional day, but over the holiday there. Correct.
So I think this is a slippery slope, right? Because of the fact that there are several religions that this community is involved with, for us to determine which is an important religious holiday or not in the school year is kind of a slippery slope to this. I have the same feeling about Good Friday, what have you. Technically speaking, Rosh Hashanah is sundown Monday to sundown Wednesday from a Jewish religious holiday perspective. So I don't think that this is something that committee should get into. I don't think we should have any religious holidays on the school calendar. We do offer as part of the policy their excused absences for that. So there's not an attendance piece. And that's just my opinion, especially where the feedback is not coming from our constituents. I do hear what you're saying, but I just think this is a slippery slope for the entire committee to start addressing religious holidays independently.
Mrs. Baron.
I have to disagree with you, Mr. Owen, because it's the first day of school.
Exactly.
Well, not the first day of school. I can understand what you're saying, but I think it is very unfair for students to miss their very first day of opening school or staff.
And Ms. Fox, if I may, that is the only reason why I'm bringing it to your attention because it's the first day. That's where I make the distinction. I did recognize, did reach out to clergy in the community and did address that day. And the Tuesday is in fact significant in relation to those family members. So.
So and your concern is acknowledged. It is not our role to figure out what religions we're going to support or not. That's not our role at all. But first day of school is a little different. So I do have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? This is one opposed. Before we move on to the next discussion, I did want to acknowledge that the absence of Ms. Blum is due to an award she's receiving tonight, the Myra Kraft Award, which is a very prestigious award. And we have a star amongst us who's not here tonight, but normally is. I just wanted to put that out. Now, Superintendent, if you want to go on to the next topic of discussion.
Yeah, I think the primary topic in addition to the calendar change, since we're a month away from the start of school, was obviously the reopening and kind of the plan in relation to our district, but also the calendar. All the directors will be at our next meeting to give their reports. Ms. Lee's, the Director of Finance, supplied you with ample information as it relates to business and specifically said if there are questions that any of the board members have for either of us after the meeting, just send her an email or text and we'll be able to respond on the 25th. But thank you, Ms. Fox. So the focus, and I think the primary topic, and I think probably why we have a little bit larger audience than typical here, is to take a look at the DESI guidelines and 2021 fall reopening, as it's noted there. I just want to point out, obviously, good evening to those parents, the community members who came out tonight. I thank you. The Department of Public Health and Department of Secondary Education issued a joint statement on a safe return to school around July 30th. And I'm going to supply that detailed guidance for families and communities that haven't seen it on the website in my superintendent's corner tomorrow. Some of the highlights of the guidance include all schools are required to be in person full time, five days a week, no remote option. Obviously, for our district, we were way ahead of the game last spring when we brought all our students back, both five days in person. Masks are strongly recommended for students pre-K to six. Again, I'm just giving you some of the highlights of the guidance that was, that was the joint guidance, pre-K to six while indoors. Masks are strongly recommended for those who are not yet vaccinated, both students, staff, and visitors while indoors. All staff and students are required to wear a mask while on a van or bus or in the health office. No specific distancing is required while in school or on the bus. Students may eat snacks, have lunch without masks and without extra distancing. Continued good hygiene, staying home when feeling, not feeling well, both for the adults and students, is advised. Protocols will continue for quarantining and contact tracing. We'll have some updates on that in the coming weeks prior to school, starting now on September 8th, about a month away. And the decision to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status is supported both by DPH and DESI and this organization as a district, myself included. So I'll be sending out a superintendent's corner, as I referenced, tomorrow, and a one-call phone message to our school community, providing our new school calendar and the entire school guidance document if families haven't had a chance to see it. We'll continue our efforts to provide a safe in-person return next month, including our second free COVID vaccine here on site at the high school next Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00. For all eligible students and family members that choose to, again, an opportunity that we offered prior to the close of school and will offer once again. It's something the state has encouraged school districts to do in relation to being sure that we try to get our kids back as safe as possible to full in-person instruction. It's my recommendation at this time that the school committee support the DESI, DPH guidance in our district as a safe return to in-person instruction. We will once again offer COVID testing and to do in testing, we'll actually expand that program to have two options for both students and families this year. For asymptomatic individuals, we'll once again offer the opportunity if parents so choose to have students who to test positive or not or negative. And then we'll also expand our contact tracing for close contacts to an asymptomatic, close-contact program that the state is offering, that I'm pleased to hear they're offering at no cost, which is a test and stay, where we have an individual in the school community who tests positive, and then a cadre of individuals, students and close contacts, are immediately required to quarantine and miss school time. That won't be the case in the fact that they'll be able to remain in school if they test negative, and we'll offer that through school nurses if families choose. So a family which didn't have that option last year when you identified will have the option to keep their students in school and not miss valuable in-person instructional time. Something we're working on in the coming weeks, and I'll have a lot more information for families to send out. But that kind of captures for the committee my recommendation at this time, which is that we strongly recommend for those populations that identified earlier, that pre-K, under 12, that not eligible vaccination, masks indoors, and that we strongly recommend for those who are not vaccinated indoors to wear masks. That's the language that I support as superintendent of schools, that I would support this committee support at this time. We do have the luxury, and I use that term loosely, but of two school committee meetings. The state has advised school districts to consider scheduling multiple meetings to afford people the opportunity, and we have built them in. We actually have a meeting. A lot of school districts don't meet, school committees don't meet in August, and they're kind of scrambling. We have a meeting obviously tonight, but also on August 25th, which still allows ample time to make some adjustments in relation to new data that may develop or come up in the coming weeks. So I, so I'm confident as much success as we had last year in seeing our students safely return to school, I believe it's a safe plan for our students and staff. Safety remains really a top priority for me and for this board and district. I've been in contact with health officials. I've been in contact with our school physician. And we will continue to monitor the situation in the coming weeks leading up to the start of school to be sure that we can safely see all our students return to in-person instruction as directed by the state.
And don't you have another clinic coming up?
So we do have, so we have the clinic scheduled for next Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00. It's actually two, so I don't, again, I'm not, and again, for any families who may be offended, I am not directing or requiring. I'm just simply, as a school district, offering the opportunity for eligible students and staff and parents and family members within the community from 3:00 to 6:00 to come to the high school gymnasium, state-run, no cost. You can pre-register. You can walk up. There'll be two dates. There'll be a follow-up date on September 8th. They're offering both the J&amp;J vaccine and the Pfizer, and you have a choice. Second date would be for if you were taking the Pfizer the first time, or the second date could be that you missed the first time and you want to get the J&amp;J the second time. So like we did in June, and we had over 100 individuals participate, we feel it's just one more attempt by our school district to provide as safe an approach to in-person instruction. That needs to be our primary priority. I'm a parent of two children, a little bit older and now, but I can relate. The last thing I want to see is see your children sitting at the kitchen table, learning remotely next year and taking a step back. So whatever approach we take, I think we need to do it cautiously and safely. I do think the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Department of Education is taking a very cautious Massachusetts approach. Likewise, I think we should take a very cautious Freetown-Lakeville approach to seeing our kids come back and staff.
Comments from the committee, Mr. Owen?
Just to dumb it down to my level here, we're not requiring, we're strongly recommending
That is correct.
Based upon what we know today.
That's correct. So the parents that have reached out to me, and whether it be through emails, texts, or phone calls, I've conveyed the message of strongly recommends. When the next question invariably comes up, which I think I didn't maybe say specifically, will the parent and or family have the choice with their children? Yes. They will have that choice. So again, now, and again, I'm not politicizing this as superintendent of schools. What I'm saying to you is I'm strongly recommending that if you're under 12 and you're indoors, you should be wearing a mask. If you're not vaccinated, you should be wearing a mask. I'm strongly recommending that. The state is. We're not shirking our responsibility relative to safety, but at the same time, we're trying to also respect families and parents making decisions as to what they think. I've advised people to talk to pediatricians, but that's a long-winded way. I know you guys are not shocked by me giving a long-winded answer, but.
No, we aren't.
It is in fact a parent, it is a parent choice.
I will say, just from the audience perspective, please keep in mind, a lot can change between now and the first day of school. A lot can be dictated and demanded by the state, which will leave no choice by this committee. So if you want to continue whatever position you lie on, reach out to your state officials, reach out to that aspect of it. We said that earlier on in this process. That's where you're, this is, like, I've always said there's a 50/50 pandemic here.
You have. Yep.
But next meeting, we could have just as many people for the other side of the fence. But we're going based upon the guidelines. I can't speak for everybody here, we'll support or whatever, but the state still can come back and have a different perspective on this. That's why we are meeting again before the start of school.
But the state is also monitoring the data.
Exactly.
And that's where the guidelines come from. They come from data that they're following on a daily basis. It's not, they're not pulling stuff out of the sky.
I mean, keep in mind, as we monitor the data in the last two weeks in Freetown and Lakeville, 13 cases, Freetown and Lakeville, over two-week period out of over 400 and some odd tests. I mean, this is, I'm just simply responding to the state-reported data as it relates to both of our towns. Positivity rate below 2%. I mean, and we all recognize students are coming back to school and they're going to be in close proximity and all those factors. But if you look at the current data in relation to our communities, we feel that we are taking the right steps. And as pointed out, if the commissioner and/or governor and/or individuals dictate and/or require, as this district has always done, we'll adhere to what those requirements are moving forward.
That's correct. Mrs. Baron. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Owen.
Just, I appreciate the fact of the clinic. I think that's a great opportunity for parents. I do have a concern about the buses and the federal requirement of the mask and the more of the concerns of our drivers, right? So they're there for our safety of getting the students from one place to another. Now to have a policing, lack of a better word, that they're all wearing the mask on the bus, I am concerned about that. I'd be interested, not necessarily for tonight, how we're going to address that.
That's transportation in general.
So I, I meet with the drivers on August 17th in an opening orientation. I've always met with them my years here, along with Mr. Resendi's, the driver. I will tell you, our experience has been, because obviously we had students driving on transportation last year, both in spaced-out, but also closer proximity when those restrictions, and we did not have any cases that I was aware of where we had problems. What we're going to say to the drivers is it's not their responsibility to police them. Likewise, it's not going to be our responsibility to have our staff policing students in and out of the classrooms. We're going to offer that opportunity. We are asking drivers to report it to us if there's an issue. Radios and technology allow that to happen pretty quickly. I know I won't put one administrator on the spot, but before that bus pulls into the parking lot in relation to either coming to and from school, although, like I said, we did not have instances, this happened last year, that will be addressed by administration moving forward in a professional, respectful manner. So.
That transportation hasn't, transportation hasn't gotten away from the masks. So whether you're on public transit or airplanes or trains, they are requiring masks.
We have additional masks available for the drivers so that, for that, to address that example. For example, this child simply forgot as they get on to board the bus, those types of scenarios.
So parents, help us keep us in the recommendation of this is your model onto making sure that our kids have it on the bus. It's a federal requirement.
Yes, that we can't get away from.
Health office, similar type of.
Right, right. Excuse me, we're not at public comment yet. I had another comment from Mrs. Baron.
I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Madeiras said. Despite what we hear in the community and certainly in the media that is over the top, Lakeville had five confirmed cases last week. Freetown had eight. That's where his 13 is. So even though it says that our positivity rate was 1.71 in Lakeville, you know, one says, 1.71 out of what? And that's really only five cases in the town. So we really need to just, that's why I'm delighted that Mr. Madeiras is making this announcement tonight. And if we can keep it down and, and.
It's a moving target, but we're watching it. And that's what, that's what we need to do.
So the board should know tonight that as I, and I made sure, because I didn't know what the audience would be, that this will be communicated to the entire school community through the superintendent's corner, which is an email that goes out to all families. And I'm actually going to do, which I tend not to do, parents, disrupt your day, but I am going to put a phone message out because I think it's important enough information the start of school.
Oh, definitely.
And this piece a month out. We have bus routes coming out in a couple of weeks and things. So and we'll put it on our website and, you know, we'll provide that information and I'll keep you updated.
Further comment from the committee? Okay, we'll open it up to public discussion. We are going to ask that people limit their comments no more than three minutes, if you don't mind. And also to avoid repetition, you know, make sure you're adding something new to the discussion. If you don't mind, that would be great. So I see a hand here, and then I saw one right in the back. So yeah, and I'm going to direct everyone who needs to speak, who wants to speak, to go to the podium, please.
Name and address.
And name and address. I just need name and town.
Hi there. You said name and town. So my name is Anne Marie Sherrick. I live in Lakeville. I'm the parent of an incoming eighth grader and an incoming fourth grader. Just to give you a little bit of background before I read what I'm about to read, my family chose Teca last year because I have a high-risk eighth grader whose cardiologist asked that she remain remote. I need a second here. The concern I have is if you're strongly recommending and leaving it to parent choice, there's going to be a whole bunch of people who are unvaccinated, wearing masks with my high-risk kid, who is vaccinated, but the Delta variant, we know, is getting through. Not making people super sick, but getting through. My other son is too young to be vaccinated. You're, well, I'm going to read what I have written down just so I don't lose track. A mask mandate for those that can safely wear them is no different from protecting our students from latex or food allergies. Our elementary schools are peanut-free to protect a small number of students. Mask wearing is no different from that. We have high-risk students like my daughter, who may or may not be vaccinated. Mask wearing will keep those students safer. We all know it's not 100% effective, but it does decrease risk in spreading the virus if one is infected. We also know that this works better when both parties in close proximity and there is no social distancing occurring this year. Our masks. I have heard multiple teachers in this district and in the district I teach in, which I had to go on leave from last year because of my students having to remain remote because of my high-risk daughter. I have heard multiple teachers report that there were few to zero incidents in their classrooms of students not cooperating with last year's mask mandate. The cry for unmasking our kids is an issue created by parents, driven by a political agenda. The APA and CDC both strongly suggest mask wearing in schools. We followed their guidance last year. Why are we stopping listening to them now? There is no remote option for my kids this year or for other at-risk kids this year to remain in the district. We should not have to unenroll our kids to keep them safe. The majority of our students are unvaccinated right now due to either being too young or due to parental choice. I have no problem with parents not choosing to vaccinate their children. But please keep our children safe by mandating mask wearing for students and staff that can safely do so. I know there's some exceptions, some kids that can't and some staff that can't, until the CDC and APA declares it's safe to do otherwise. I didn't write this down, but in closing, if we can mandate whether a girl can wear spaghetti straps to school or a thing like dress codes, you can mandate that they wear masks to keep that small percentage safe, just like you can mandate to not let, allow elementary school kids to bring in a peanut butter sandwich. There's too much gray area and it's going to get really messy and it's very scary for a parent of an at-risk kid. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. I think next I had, yes, if you would give us your name and town at the podium.
My name is Jean Clausen. I did not write anything.
Could I ask what your town was? I'm sorry.
Oh, my name is Jean Clausen. I live on Bullock Road in East Freetown. I didn't prepare or write anything for this, but what I'm going to say is I have two students in the school system, one at Freetown Elementary and one at Lakeville. My sons both have disabilities that affect their mask, okay? So they have, they struggle with it. Having a mask on my son's face that has sensory process disorder is a constant trigger for him all day long. He can never sit comfortable in class. He can never do anything because of this mask. The same, that one same mask, I had to wash every single night because that's the only one he could tolerate. It's an ongoing issue of who is who and what is what. But does the mask really protect anybody? No, it doesn't. Does it protect from all the particles? No, it doesn't. So I'm just asking for parental choice, and I sympathize with other students that may not, but I'm asking you to sympathize with me as well. See, I listen to you, sorry, without shaking my head, but you're shaking it to me. So
Okay.
This is like.
We're refraining from. We're not going to have the side comments, please. And who's the next person for public comment? Is there another person?
I don't know the rules. Are you allowed to ask questions of the superintendent? Or do you have to?
First, you tell us who you are and what town you're from, and then yesterday. They're being recorded by Lake Cam.
My name is Matt Allen. I'm from Freetown. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, are we okay to ask questions? I'm not sure of the rules.
Well, it's usually a commentary.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just, just a point of, I just.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
And Ms. Fox, at the end, if I can provide some edification or clarity in relation to a question, I, per your request, I'll be able to do so.
No, I think that's fine. Yep.
Um, my biggest concern after watching the last year and having our everyday lives micro-managed from bureaucrats up on high has been when parents are going to be trusted to do the right thing for their families. For me, one of the blessings of this whole thing is that children have not been impacted by COVID to the extent that adults have. Even though the Delta variant right now is ravaging parts of the United States, it's not ravaging Massachusetts. We have a high vaccination rate. Vaccines work. So if you are able to and you want to, take advantage of them. They protect us. We do not have to protect people from going into the hospital. They, we have a transmission level now. If you look at the graph that's put up by the Massachusetts Department of Health, the graph is already on its way down. We've seen that the Delta variant in other countries in the UK that have dealt with this already spikes real quick and then drops real fast. So as you all said, this could be changing quickly over the next month. Masking has become political. I'm sorry for that. My heart bleeds for you, by the way. We're so afraid for our kids, you know? We don't want to be afraid for our kids. And I'm sure your child will be fine. These fine professionals, I hope, I'm praying for you, okay? But these fine professionals here did a great job for us last year. They went through a tough, tough year. My wife's a teacher. I know what she went through every day. I will tell you, dropped my son off at Freetown Elementary School, and it broke my heart every day he had to go in with a face covering on because he couldn't have a normal childhood. These guys are at the lowest risk for all of this, even the Delta variant, as far as data shows right now. Like I said, it could change, but they're at the lowest risk for severe outcomes. And when you take the balancing test of severe outcomes to what the possible long-term effects could be from development issues with masking, which in and of itself, I think is over-relied upon to provide protection. Do we still have the plans for air quality control in the school, in the classrooms, circulation? That tends to be, according to studies, a better option because as the air gets pushed out, if you're sitting there and you pass by somebody, this is, this is said by Dr. Michael Osterholm, who is a COVID advisor to President Biden. He's an infectious disease specialist at University of Minnesota. I sent this out to the committee. And he talked about how, you know, masking is only really effective if you use an N95 mask. The mask that we use every day, the cloth masks, work, gave you an extra five minutes and a 20-minute period of protection. It's good if you walk by somebody in a grocery store or something like that, might work for you. But ultimately, in a room for hours at a time, your breath, which is aerosolized with the virus, fills the room. And unless we move that air out of that room, your mask is going to basically, at the end of the day, by long periods of time, going to be somewhat useless. And so I don't want to over- useless. And so I don't want to over-rely on a tool that's questionable. If we want to keep people safe, let's get fans, move the room around, air filtration, something like that, keep people safer. The data on the CCCDC's website that they rely on is observational and epidemiological studies. Random controlled trial studies on masking has consistently been statistically insignificant when it comes to respiratory viruses. Seen it many times. One, the Dan Mask study in Denmark showed statistical insignificance. The CDC's own study on studying Georgia's school systems, back in the fall, before vaccines were available, showed statistically insignificant when it comes to masking children. The adults, however, who have been shown by science to transmit the virus from adult to child is where it happens more often. It's like kids come into school, they got it from their moms and dads at home. That was, there was a statistical significance with masking the adults and the staff and the teachers. So, and it was minor, that, 30 to 40%. So, and the teachers are now vaccinated to a greatest, to the great extent that I know. So, again, it's a balancing test, risks versus rewards. I would side on making it so that moms and dads can make their own decisions, and balance that test for themselves.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Um, is there another public comment? I see in the back, woman in the back, yep.
How are you? My name is Caroline Sadler. I, my husband and I, we live in Freetown with our three children. I first want to say thank you. I know how much work this, you know, the past two school years have been, and how much it continues to be, and that, like, after it all, I do, with my whole heart, feel that everybody is really just trying to do what's best for the overall community. My husband and I, we have three kids. We have a second grader going into Freetown Elementary, a fourth grader going into Gray's, and a sixth grader going into the middle school this year. Last year, with all the uncertainty, we unenrolled our kids. We homeschooled them, and at the end of the year, I was, I was really proud. I was really happy. They made incredible gains. They grew as people. They really, I was so beyond proud of our entire family for it. But I was really happy for them to be able to come back. And myself, as a classroom educator, I know, like, all the little in-between-the-lines things that they, that they did miss, even with all that they gained. So I really do strongly believe that this, at this point in this journey of this pandemic, we, we need to let this part be a family decision, a, which in turn does make it a community decision. We are, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train. I, I'm sorry. I'm losing my train of thought. I left my stuff in my car, which is a problem.
It happens.
I know, right? I just do feel like, I know, being in the classroom last year, the kids, they were great. They did a great job. But when you're teaching phonics, when you have a student that might not necessarily qualify for a, you know, to be, to be, like, have a doctor's note to not have it, but they get those cues from you as, you know, the adults in the room that help bring them back, help, you know, de-escalate behaviors before they even start, that's just, you know, it's just a smile, it's just, sometimes can be a tap. But the body language that I think that we're missing with this, I think, is really important, especially in the younger grades. If it's possible, I would love for this to be a, a personal family decision. And I appreciate your support in that. Thank you.
Thank you. And feel free, if you have written comments and you want to send them in.
Okay.
That's fine, too. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Pat Ren, and I have three grandchildren.
Excuse me, could you just tell us your town?
Living with me, uh, Lakeville.
Thank you.
Thank you. Living with me, and all three of them are in three different districts. And so I had three different, you know, in three different districts, three different hybrid and the whole thing. But my little guy is the one that's in this district over in Assawamse, and he has speech issues. So he was working with speech, and of course, he lost a lot of that last year. And I know that wearing the mask was extremely difficult for him to try to communicate, and he got angry all the time, because without his mask, they can barely understand him. And then when they were doing speech through the computer, you know, that was not working either. But, um, so I like the idea of a choice. Now, I don't know what the other two districts that my other two grandchildren are going through, what they're going to do, but I'm hoping that it's a choice. I know that if you feel comfortable wearing a mask, you know, you can wear one if you're vaccinated, not that. I believe in freedom of choice, and I also think that some children can't handle it, and others can. And I think, I need my little guy that already has problems talking, to be able to articulate without his mask, because he told me last year, I'm just not talking to them anymore. And I went, why? He goes, they don't understand me. And he tries to, of course, take off his mask, and then they, you know, still have a hard, a difficult time, but it's worse with the mask. So he decided he wouldn't talk anymore. So he just didn't talk all year. And then, of course, I have one that's over at Rise and Tides. He's got the ADHD and anxiety and things. He loves his mask, because it gives him what he wants to hide. It's just funny, with three kids, they're all different. And then my granddaughter is over at Old Colony, and she has asthma and a lot of allergies and medical conditions, and it's very difficult for her to breathe in the mask. She doesn't care for that. So, and she is not even going to be able to get a vaccination if she wanted one, because she has allergies to everything. So her doctor already said, well, yeah, we're just going to, you know? And she would prefer not to wear the mask, because it helps her breathe better without it.
Thank you so much for, for that enlightening information. That's.
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you for the enlightening information. Some of this you don't think about.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? We can, oh, yes, ma'am.
Does this mic really work? Okay, it kind of does now. My name is Melissa Mastrangilo. I live in Lakeville. My daughter goes to Assawamse Elementary School. I do not have anything prepared, but I do have a few things to state. We literally shut down the world for a, basically a flu, because the flu disappeared. Have we ever shut the world down for, like, any respiratory virus before? No, we haven't. Okay, what's done is done. But have we not learned anything from the past year? Like, our children need normalcy. I understand that if you think the mask works so great, then send your kid to school with a mask on. I have no problem with that. But I really don't think the mask works so great, because I've done research. I don't watch the news. The news is just continually, just all it talks about is COVID-19. What about child trafficking? What about everything else in the world that's going on? Oh, no, all we can talk about is COVID-19. That literally was a man-made virus. But I don't want, I'm not getting into that. We're not going to get into that. We're going to get into the fact that what we're here today is to talk about whether our kids should wear masks or not wear masks. So my child is not going to school if masks are mandated. So she will stay home, and I will homeschool her, and I can tell you, that's not going to be easy, because she already is on IEP, she needs extra help, and she should be in school full-time. These kids are literally being taught to, you know, be scared of their peers, to stay away from others. They cannot share. They're literally being taught everything that they need socially to be taught at this moment in time. They're growing. They need oxygen, their brains, their organs, everything is still growing in them, and they're literally, you're depriving them of oxygen. It's friggin' crazy. It's absolutely insane. Like, what is happening in the world right now? Like, no matter what, like, it should be the parent's choice. That's it. Like, I don't care, like, again, like, if you think the mask works so great, send your daughter to school in a mask. I'm sorry that your daughter has an underlying condition. But like, the rest of our children, they don't. And they need normalcy.
Okay, that, we need to, we need to be very careful with the kinds of things we say. Um, no, you, yes, you did, and, and.
All right, I felt like everyone was up here way longer than me, but, you know, like I said what I had to say, and again, like, my daughter won't be going to school if the masks are mandated. My daughter is not going to school with a mask on. Absolutely not. I have scientific facts. I printed them out. I have a petition here with, I actually have an online petition with 260 signatures. Right here, I have 50. I will put it back at my parents' restaurant after today, and I will get you as many signatures as I can. But my child will not be wearing a mask.
Thank you.
There's plenty of information out there. If you look anywhere else besides the news, research, doctors, nurses, they have plenty of information for you.
So my name is Kendra Leary, and I live in Lakeville, Mass. I have one that just graduated, actually, this year, but three others, two in Assawamse and one in the middle? I don't know. There's so many schools here. He's going into seventh grade, eighth grade. Uh, but anyway, I, actually, one of my children, actually, two, sorry, two of my boys were diagnosed last year with some disabilities, learning disabilities, and that was tough enough. And I know wearing a mask really, really affected my little guy. And when I had to bring him to the psychologist, psychiatrist, I don't know which one it is, I'm sorry, to, for the testing, I was looking at her, and I said, I'm so sorry, but you lost me, like, five minutes ago. I'm like, because all I can see is eyes, and your whole face is taken up from, you know, and I said, it's just such a distraction to me. And she said, you're not wired, you're not wired to learn like that. You're not wired to see people like that. So it is a distraction. And it is going to distract your child from learning. But she said, I'm wearing it for your child's safety, but your child, my child, both of them did not need to wear it, for hers, because of their age. And I did also research, just like this woman did, and we talk about masks, and I'm not going to go on and on, but I just want to make this one statement and one fact, maybe even two. But the N95 mask that needs to be worn, you actually need your face shaved down. Even just one particle of hair, that virus can get through it. They had found that 60 GSM face mask had particle capture efficiency of 94% for total particles greater than 0.3 microns. The coronavirus has 0.125%. The mask, I'm sorry, it's, it's right here written down. It's not working. And the last thing that I do have to say is, please stop making our children, every time they get up from a seat, put neurotoxins on their hand, because this antibacterial soap and this constant hand sanitizing that's burning my little children that have sensitive skin, I truly feel is more dangerous, is more dangerous. So we need to really look into things more, and we really need to think about what's FDA-approved and what's FDA-not-approved, because we're telling people to get a vaccine that's FDA-not-approved, correct. It's not FDA-approved yet. I almost died from two FDA-approved medical devices after a double mastectomy. They almost killed me, okay, my implants that were FDA-approved. So thankfully, I got them out, and I'm not bedridden anymore. But I was so sick, and I wasn't there for my children for years, because of two FDA-approved devices that were put into my body. So do your research. Please do your research, because some of them are lying to us, and some of them are not. And thank you so much for having us in here.
Thank you. Thank you. We could probably take a couple more, and then we have to move on. We have a pretty robust agenda. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Heather Wedge. I'm from Lakeville. I have three boys. My concern is the transportation. I understand that they're saying that it's federally mandated, but it's not public transportation. I can't jump on that school bus. We pay for that in town. So as far as I know, it's, that wouldn't be considered public. The windows are all open, and I know they're open the whole time that the kids are on it, because my children were freezing last year at school. On their way to school, they would, my kids who never wear winter jackets were like, we need our winter coats, we need our boots, our gloves, we need everything, because the windows are open. So there's plenty of ventilation on those buses. I don't believe that they need masks. Why can't we do this at a pub, at a local level? My other problem is, and I'm sorry, and I don't mean to attack, but, Ms. Fox, you walked around here before the cameras were rolling without a mask on. Was it just for show, when the cameras go on, that you put it on?
No, I forgot. I do that a lot. I walked into, I do try to wear it, because I am, I mean, a compromised as well. I mean, I have my issues, but sometimes I do this and forget. So thank you for pointing that out.
Um, and one other thing, too, is, last year, my son was in sixth grade, and his social studies teacher, every day, would bring up the vaccine. That's not something that should be spoken about in class. That's between a child's mother, or father, guardian, whatever, and their doctor. The teachers should not be bringing this up, and that's something that really bothered me. He would come home every day and say, my teacher was asking me again. He finally said, I like rats, but I don't want to be one. It's not really approved. Thankfully, my child does his research with me. He's right there next to me, listening, and he's looking at the things that I look at. He's intelligent, and I'm so proud of him for that. So I just want to say that maybe the teachers should be told, keep it out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Fox?
Yes.
When we get to the, when we, I'll respond to, I'll clarify a couple of points.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that you could, okay.
That I think I can provide some insight.
Do we have one more? Yes, I thought, yeah, I thought you wanted to. Okay.
Joy Malomo in Lakeville, and we've got two kids in the district here at this school. One of them can come to school and deal with a mask. However, I don't feel like I want him to have a constant thing restricting his breathing. And technically, none of you, or Desi, or anybody, should be requiring or saying that my child should have a medical device, because you're not their doctor. That has to be known by you guys. This has to stop now. The other things are, the other child can't go to school, because she can't wear the mask. So we don't know what she's going to do. She's got an IEP, it's going to be really hard. She hates being in school with a mask. She lasted 45 minutes of the first day of the last year, when we finally went back. She has anxiety and, and all that. So they said, just go. And, and we missed out on being able to stay in school, because we tried to, we tried, she wanted to come to school so badly, and she tried to come to school. And we missed out on being able to have her in her classes online. She had to go to Teca. And so she was totally separated from all of her friends in school, except for the couple that come over and this and that, which, by the way, we always did. We never stopped them from seeing their friends. Oh, for about three weeks, we did. Yeah, for about three weeks in the beginning, we stopped them from seeing their friends. And then we researched, and then we found out what was really happening. And, yeah, you're correct, it is political. And unfortunately, it's not by us. It comes from the Mask Teachers Association. It's, it's really bad. It's really, really bad right now, and a lot of you guys had a lot of good points. A couple of the other things are, I wanted to read to you, or maybe you guys can, can tell me, what is Desi? What are they? What are they supposed to do for us?
The Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed?
Yep, I know that. And what is their motto?
Oh.
You know, what is their, like, little blurb about, what do they say? What are they supposed to be doing for us? Can anybody recite it? Does anybody know why we use them? No?
No, I don't recall what the motto was. Why don't you share?
It's very simple. The goal of Massachusetts Public K-12, an adult education system, is to prepare all students for success in life. If we're putting a mask on their face, or toxins in their bodies, mandatorily, now we're taking away their oxygen to be able to use their brains the right way. Is that going to really prepare them for success in life? Is that gonna really prepare them for success in life? They should not be making medical decisions. You guys should not be listening to that. You should be coming to a, a local level and uh, uh, it was either Halifax, Hanover, Hanovers, or um, Hanover. Last night, they caught mask mandate completely. They, they said, "There's no masks in school whatsoever." If you wanna come, you, you can, right? You can have that right. But there's not gonna be any mandates. And they did it at a local level. They don't have to wait for the state.
Can I just say one thing? We're not mandating masks.
I know. So what happens when Desi comes back in September?
It's strongly recommended, no, it isn't.
So what happens when Desi comes back in Sep, in, in August, August 18th or something? Or 28th and says, "Oh, we recommend masks." What are we gonna do? If we're going by Desi, you know you're gonna tell us to put the masks on.
But they haven't said you have to.
But listen, they're gonna string us along the same way that they did last year. Why are they making medical decisions for our children? Why are you guys allowing that? I, I might sound irate because I'm very frustrated.
Right.
We have put time into this. We're up till 1:00 AM. We are on committee calls with the state. They're keeping us on hold for 16 hours. What is going on? We gotta stop it and stop it now.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. So, Mrs. Medeiris, it's your turn to...
And, and I think some of the board members felt the need. Just to clarify for the cameras as well, the microphones are really helping for Lake Cam. I know it doesn't appear like a loud mic, but it's helping to broadcast it out to the community. Again, I just wanna reiterate, my position and recommendation to the school board, supported by the school board as they have at this point, is that masks are strongly recommended by DPH and Desi. And that's what I'm staying at. And no, there's not a but at this point. As of August 11th, that's, that's kinda where we're at, at this, this stage. All I would ask you to do is look at, this is my eighth year as superintendent. I have not been dictated by Desi or by DPH in my tenure here as superintendent. I started off the session by saying, "We're looking at what the health officials are saying, what the state officials are saying, then we need to make a Free Town, Lakeville decision." And this board, I said that, I said it right at the very beginning of the meeting.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
So, so, so the, so the reality is, there are some things that prohibit us to proceed locally. And I'll address the bus issue specific in the guidance. Federal public health order is that all students and staff are required to wear masks on school buses in this country. Period. I'm just, I, I, again, I'm not asking for your opinion on it or my opinion. I'm reading the statement. It's a federal public order. Typically backed with funding towards the state and then down to the districts, right? The reality of the way it's set up. I, the other piece I wanted to underscore, and I think it was Mr. Allen who referenced, there's a lot more happening to make sure that our environments and our schools are safe that I'm not speaking to today. The mitigation strategies that we continue. This district supported a close to $6 million project that is ongoing to improve our ventilation, heating systems, air quality through Train. It costs the taxpayers in Free Town and Lakeville $0. $0. We started it prior to COVID and we are at 95%. It's in their packet, that's not gonna be discussed tonight.
About 95%.
95% of the, the project is done. Train, the company that's doing the work in all of our schools here, in addition to me going to the state tomorrow for a site visit at Assawamset to look at new windows and a replacement project potentially at Assawamset, one of our elementary schools in Free Town. So I just, I just wanted to underscore, cuz I, I agree with some of the other parents, there are other factors and other things that we can do and we are doing in our schools to be sure that it's a safe environment beyond. I don't wanna lessen the significance of the mask discussion, but I wanna be sure that people understand there is much more that has gone into the steps and the protocols and the procedures that we'll put in place. In reference to comments and opinions, 100% agreement. Everything I'm sharing with you tonight is not my personal opinion, by the way. You folks did not hire me as superintendent of schools to, to offer my personal opinion. I do that sometimes at home, Mrs. Medeiris would say, at the kitchen table if I'm offered that with my two kids. Just like you should as parents for your, for your children. I'm offering my educational 35 years of experience to this board to make the right decisions in relation to your children from a safety perspective, from a health perspective, from an educational perspective. I think we are right on track. I think the committee is simply trying to point out that where we are in time, we do have one more additional meeting and we have no idea what other officials, whether they be state officials, public officials, town officials, federal officials, are gonna come out with or what the latest news is gonna be. When that comes in, we'll address it. Doesn't mean we're gonna make a, a change on our practice. And I just wanna point out that it will be parental choice based on strongly recommended and the language that we're, we're gonna follow for the start of the school year, which is over a month away. So we're still having some time to look through taking care of our schools. It does not mean that we're gonna change that position, but the reality is, in fact, I, I can tell you, superintendents speak weekly with the, with the Commissioner of Education. I, I do not get the sense that the state is going to make a change in the near future in relation to that. Again, I'm not betting my house on it. I'm just telling you the fact is, that's not information I have readily available to me as superintendent of schools or super, or, or this school committee does at this point. We do have schools coming back. We have schools starting before us. We're not starting till September 8th, so we have ample time. We have one more school committee meeting. Again, affording parents, community members, the opportunity to share your public concern. I just wanted to be sure, and I know some board members felt, the position of this district currently is that we are strongly recommending masks indoors for those, those populations that I spoke to earlier. With the, with the underlying understanding that it ultimately will be the family's choice to be made for those children as they come to our five schools on September 8th. So...
Could I ask that you not speak out? Hold on, we, we have a, let's just kinda follow the protocol. Could you raise your hand and not just speak out?
So Jean, I just wanted to reference one more thing, if I may. Cuz it did, I, I apologize. I, I kinda was trying to focus on some of those other pieces. I wanna point out, you're 100% correct. Employees in this organization are not to offer their personal opinion or, or to, to point out or single out individual students and/or adults. That is not the position of this superintendent or this organization. I am not gonna suggest that it hasn't happened in the past eight years previous to me being here or in every district and every community in the Commonwealth because of the passion behind what's best for kids. But I will be meeting with my leadership team next week, which is three weeks prior to school, all the principals, to reiterate that point, that classroom teachers, that custodians, that paraprofessionals, you're absolutely entitled to your personal opinion. But we are not gonna subject our children and one another to an unprofessional environment for those kids in relation to mask-wearing, not mask-wearing, whatever, whatever the circumstance may be. Um, so, so I will be addressing that with leadership team moving forward to be sure that, in fact, we can address that as our students come back to school. We have 2,700 kids. I'm extremely excited, they have the numbers there. Our, our numbers are right on target. We were able to bring back a lot of our kids who were not able to. Full in-person instruction. Um, so I, I tried to, I tried to hit a couple of things.
No, you did, you did, you did. But they're good, they're reasonable questions. I see there's a question right here in the front row.
Yeah, the dist, the, the district, the district, that's correct. To clarify, the district is currently, cuz it's not supported by the state cuz we're a public school, a remote option at this time. Keep in mind, we were also going full remote last spring successfully with our kids. Um, and obviously, families similar to the mask have a choice to educate their children in other capacities if in fact, they, they do so.
So, Mr. Owen?
I, I just wanna, two, two pieces here. To the constituent that raised the issue about what is happening in the classroom, I implore you that at the point that it's happening, to reach out to the building principal. Having this conversation brought up at the school committee meeting offers, while it has a good from this point here, none of the building principals, and my kids have gone through the schools, have never responded to an issue or addressed that at the point in time. So I implore you, if you have a problem of something that's in the class and what have you, call the building principal, email the building principal, CC the superintendent. I have not had a situation where none of them did not respond. Now, you may not fully agree with the response, but definitely do that. Don't go to social media, do that. Call the building principal. That's your best course of action. I'm disappointed because of the fact that it's happening, but this is something that could have been nipped in the bud and not have a continual um, conversation happen in that classroom.
And that festers too. It doesn't make anything better.
I will say, and I've said this all along, this is a 50/50 pandemic. The next few meetings, we could have the exact opposite count and numbers of who's going in here. I ask that there is a level of respect and compassion for people's opinions. There is going to be research, pro, cons, differ, what have you. We're all trying to get through it. We have different perspectives. At the end of the day, we're trying to do what is right for our kids, whether it's one way or another. I just think that while it's great to be compassionate about your point of view, I would ask that you be respectful of others in that same point of view because just like we're worried about the mask, what have you, our kids are watching our actions, right? And this is the point that we need to do and, and to keep that. So I ask you, there's gonna be a lot of discussions over this next couple of weeks. Be respectful of different opinions. I am looking forward to the discussion 20 years from now. It's gonna be like a glass of red wine. One research is good for you, the other research is not, right? So we will get through this. We're all better people for it. But let's just have a little bit of compassion for each other's opinions and that.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, that's so well said. Um, Mrs. Barron?
I just want to um, kind of go back to last year and just remind everyone of what our staff, what Mr. Medeiris, what the school committee did. We had um, all of our kids back to school by the end of the year. In nine months, from September 15th to June 16th, we had positive cases of 196 students out of 2,700 students. It was amazing. And of those positive cases, some of them really were not sick. They just tested positive and perhaps their, their family member was positive, but they were home. Um, we had only 30 staff cases. So I think, I'm going back to the Train project, the, the ventilation project and so forth. Mr. Medeiris and the staff has really, have really done a tremendous job last year when we didn't understand the virus. And certainly, we are, everyone in this room, we understand it a whole lot better than we did a year ago, March.
Like it or not.
Like it or not, we've learned it.
We have learned, yeah. Mr. Medeiris, it, the whole leadership team did a superb job.
Yeah.
Okay, two more questions? Yes, ma'am.
So, as Mrs. Barron says, we, we understand the virus now and we know it's not going to happen. Um, I, I don't know what the end goal is. And that's what I'm sitting here wondering, what's the end goal? When do we say, "No more masks"? When do we drop? At this point, it seems to me, we don't need to strongly recommend the mask. We, as a community, could say, "Recommend the mask." Because the fact is that my kids are gonna be going to Free Town Elementary School and their teachers are still gonna be wearing masks. And they're still gonna be struggling to learn from their teachers with masks on their face. And there's still a lot of half the struggle to hear what their teachers are saying. So what, what is the end goal? We understand the virus now and we know it's not going to happen.
So Jean, I, I mean, I certainly can't predict the end goal, but I, what I would, in comment to that, keep in mind that many of the mitigations that the state had recommended, they pull back on, right? The restrictions of spacing. Employees are not required. So I've been asked that question. Am I, as an organizational leader, going to require, as some private sector um, organizations are doing, require employees? And I can tell you that the answer is the same answer that I gave to you folks about your fam, your children. I'm strongly recommending. The vast majority of our employees are vaccinated, um, and have ta, have chosen to do that. Um, again, not a requirement, but when you take away, we're no longer looking at six feet, three feet of spacing. We're gonna have our children be permitted to eat in the cafeteria and socialize. I think we are taking some steps to, to your point on the end game. It's the same conversation, I wish some of you could have heard, that I had with your school physician. Our school physician is very supportive and believes that masks would be helpful and would be, and that's what American Pediatrics is saying, right? I mean, I'm not challenging that, but that they are saying everybody should wear masks regardless. Um, he felt the same way. And my question to him and was, well, when does that stop then? So, so I wouldn't necessarily refute. Some of you may refute. I don't wanna go down that path of conversation. That maybe you would have less colds and viruses and, and, you know, with that exchange. But my question to him is, was, okay, so if we have, require all our kids to wear masks? And this was a conversation I had weeks ago, as I was starting to plan this process out for the committee. I said, "But when does that end then, right? So you're telling me forever, right? I mean, is that, is that the strategy and plan? And I'm not sure I can support that." And as it turns out, the state isn't supporting that piece of Massachusetts. Because I, I do get what's happening in, in the country, in different portions of the country, where they have already gone back to school and are weeks into school um, and have different vaccination rates. And there's so, there's so many factors to contribute. So I don't, it wasn't my response to be able to tell you when the end game's gonna be, but I do think that this state and public schools have made leaps. And I would say they're leaps in relation to providing some normalcy. I am so excited about a normal start once again to the school year. Yes, will some of our students wear masks and some of our adults wear masks to school? Most likely, that will be the case and they'll have the option to do so. But beyond that, the normalcy of athletics, of drama, of, of so many activities that our kids can engage in appear to be in the horizon. Our, our, you know, our, our athletes, for example, at the high school are coming back to us next Friday. So as much as school's starting, athletic sports and activities start prior. Um, and I'm excited about that. So I, so I do think that, I'll go back, Mr. Owen did say it pretty eloquently. If you recall, last year, I changed the, raised the bar. I keep, raise the bar there, but I used the mantra, or motto, "Respect, patience, flexibility." Still need to hold true on that one, right? Respect, patience, flexibility for all the different opinions that are out there. Trust us to do what I think we did. I think we knocked it out of the park last year in relation to getting your kids back to school safely in person. And, and we started that process for our elementary kids in November, when a lot of the communities around us weren't sending their kids back a day in person. We were sending our kindergartners, first graders, full, safely. Sherry raised, raised the reference to the number of cases that we had. Um, and so I, I am, I'm confident that the plan that we have in place, supported by this board tonight, is the plan we will move forward with. And as new data comes up and if we need to take a look at it, we've got some places in the community will be able to come back and, and voice some concerns if they do.
Thanks. We can take, like, two more questions, but I would ask if you have them to go up to the podium so that they can be recorded properly on Lake Cam? So I think you are, yeah, you, and then I think, yeah.
I have a quick question, two more points. I've been extremely worried about my friend's little kids that are learning how to talk and all that. I didn't even know he was going through that, right? Cuz I haven't seen you in a long time. But other people, they've had that concern. Can we re, request that those teachers that are in those lower grades not have a mask when they're teaching so these kids can learn properly?
So I'm gonna repeat the same recommendation to that group that, to, in my organization that I'm offering to you folks. Not more, not less. I am strongly recommending that if you're not vaccinated, to wear the mask. But at any individual status, I will support the wearing of a mask. So I, I have not, to answer, that's a, so that's a long-winded way of saying, me honestly saying, it is not my intent to mandate masks of my employees or to mandate that they cannot wear masks. And I think that's the same choice that you're asking for your children and I think that's the only fair approach.
Sure, I get that. However, with these kids that need to see the facial expressions to learn, isn't it more of a priority to teach them properly? Especially when our mask boxes that we buy say on the side of it, "Does not protect you from COVID-19." My very first mask box that I bought, I took a picture of the side that says, "Will not protect you from COVID-19 or other viruses." So, again, what are we doing? These kids need to learn properly.
Mr. Owen?
Sorry, I hear your point.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not, please don't take this the wrong way, but I can tell you, the early educators in this district, either the speech pathologists, they're all doing it. They even went out and got specialized masks where you can see the mouths of these educators. So it is happening. It is taking that consideration. So kids are seeing these teachers, their mouthing, the, the bowels, the consonants, what have you. So...
I should also add, for those of you folks, maybe some of your kids participated, which I think it's interesting in relation to the mask requirement. We've had successful summer programs this year, where this was an option for children and adults. And so the vast majority of our kids did not wear masks in classes. I know that, because I observed anecdotally, I can't tell you what the percentage was. And we were successful, and it was safe, and it was decent approach. Now, it wasn't the sheer numbers of kids coming back in the fall, but our summer programs, the day the state said it wasn't required, we instituted the fact that it was an option for those families and communicated that out. And we have had success, and maybe there's a story I'm not aware of, but I have my directors report back to me, and teachers report back to me, and I will say, the vast majority of teachers, whether it be through Mr. Owen, we do have devices that can help with that, and or simply didn't wear masks. As many of you know, I go out to the schools, will be out in the schools as well. I think, you know, we need to be safe, not only for ourselves, but for others, so.
So I think we'll take this last question, and then I would ask, people are giving a lot of very important information, we do appreciate that. If there's anything that you need to add, if you could just communicate that via email, you could send it right to Mr. Medeers, or whatever. You know, as you think about things more, as you digest the DESI guidelines that you'll see coming out of Superintendent's Corner, as those things come up and occur to you, please do share, every perspective. Thank you.
Just real quick, Mr. Medeers, you mentioned about the tests and return policy that's going to happen. Do you expect, will masking in any way, shape, or form keep students from having to quarantine? I don't think that was the case last time for close contact, right? So you still had to quarantine them when you wore a mask?
No, so, and again, I apologize, there'll be more information to come on that. The first, so the two test programs that we're looking at, we are not looking at pool testing, which some districts have chosen to do, I don't support that at this time, which is every student's tested to determine who's positive in relation, I don't think it's been necessary based on the numbers. So there are three programs the state is offering at no cost, that is not an option that I literally applied for today, that is not one of the options I applied for. The first one is the antigen test, which is simply a test in the nurse's office, that would allow parent consent if a student is symptomatic in school and you want to determine potentially whether it's a positive COVID. The second piece that, Mr. Allen, you're asking about, is this new policy, which will allow us to not require masked or unmasked individuals to be sent home and quarantined if they agree to test and show negative. Which a lot of, just keep in mind, I think the program, giving the state some credit here, came from what frustrated parents, which is, you were told by the schools, by us, you must take your child home, they're close contact. They went to their physicians, they were shown to be negative, they were not symptomatic, and yet they still couldn't return to school, because we're adhering to that.
So you expect that to go away?
This will address that, or at least afford parents the opportunity to test negative and keep the child in school, adult as well. So that program, which will be getting some more, all the nurses will be involved in that program, will be done here, you'll need parental consent to do that, so your child simply can't be tested by someone in the health office without your consent. We're going to send that home with the opening kind of packet of information you get. I think it's a whole nother layer to keep our kids safely in school, in the event that, and we know we're going to see some positive cases within our community, not just in school, but just in our community at large. We're trying not to create a disruption, I hope that answered it.
Yeah, I just know some school systems in the South have already like closed down for a week or two because they had one or two positive cases, but you end up with tons of contacts who then have to quarantine, even though, you know, with masking or whatever. And so that won't be an issue for us. If somebody gets tested, becomes a close contact, I can send them to the nurse's office that day, get a Bynext test within that day, or do you expect?
That day, within the 15 minutes.
So if he's negative, he goes back to class?
Guys go back to class, that is correct. We'll be breaking down the procedures, you have to do that for five days, once it's a negative, for five days. They stay in school, by the way, that whole time, and there'll be more information to come, then they'll simply return. So it is an absolute mechanism, I didn't actually ask my health officials, my nurses, I said, we're going to sign up for this, because I saw it as one more way to keep our kids safely in school without being disruptive. Now, a parent needs to support that, we're going to send that information home, so that's going to be coming in the weeks.
That'll all go home, right, Mr. Owen?
So that's a big change from what was happening last year, because if they were negative, they were still sent home.
That's correct.
And they had to stay there.
That's correct.
Can I, there's a lot of...
It's a huge, significant piece for maybe some of you folks that were in the audience here tonight.
Can I, because there's several topics around reentry, I have a few other questions not related to the masking or what have you. A lot of things will get back to quote-unquote "normal," so just want to reiterate to parents, can you talk a little bit about school lunches and what that's going to be happening for this year?
Yeah, so the guidance that you'll get in detail, if you haven't read, basically allows them not to have masks and eat in the cafeteria. We are sending our cafeterias back to what you remember our cafeterias looking like. Cafeteria tables are back in, students. Now, having said that, the conversation next week will be with principals, because of contact tracing and contacts, whether we have to identify a seating kind of area that your child will sit in, but the plan is to send them back to a regular lunch periods, and to start that process using the cafeteria, not in classrooms. We're not looking at a hybrid model right now where half the kids are eating in the classroom, and your child isn't with one of their good friends because that other half is there and vice versa. So it is our effort.
Specifically, free lunch.
So, oh, so, yeah, so good question, so that's maintained. The federal government is providing free lunch to any individual child in the country who chooses to take advantage of that, and breakfast.
I just want to highlight that, because I know last year, there were several parents that were like, oh, I didn't know that. So it is...
So we sent that throughout, and we'll be getting more information through the food service director, Andrea Fay. It is not just Free Town-Lakeville, it is the entire country, all public schools, any child.
And that includes breakfast?
Correct, which we offer.
The other piece is, I know last year this committee forgone the athletic fees in light of the whole situation, those are back in.
That is correct. With the exception of those individual family members who can provide documentation, we have a waiver form.
The normal process, just more of the normal activities.
That's correct. Parking, for example, for our high school, returns to a parking space and peace to do that, yeah. So those per normal practices are going back into effect as well.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for taking the time tonight, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
And thank you for being such great parents.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fox, I don't know, I know Mr. Owen kind of jumped, I don't know if any other board members have any questions in the coming?
No, I'm glad he brought up the lunch thing, because a lot of people didn't know about that.
So in the coming days and weeks, as more and more detail comes, I'll share it with the board.
I wish we could put big signs, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
You could say if you'd like.
Mrs. Fox, I do have a recommendation for the board to consider, though.
Yes, you do.
In light of the fact that you have all the detailed packet, I would suggest tabling the remainder of the agenda, carrying it over to the August 25th.
Unless there's anything on the agenda that Mr. Owen just has to have.
I did, I did place my documentation that we can provide more publicly on the 25th as well.
The only thing I'd like to have more clarity on, I am concerned about the classroom sizes, especially at the elementary school. So, and I'm assuming as I look at this, the number of sections is based upon last school year, it's not this school year.
So, no, the sections that you see are new to the document that you originally had. So the document here, we made some adjustments to some sections, because they were the previous sections. So when you got your electronic version, it was last year's sections. This document here.
So the one we have in front of us is correct?
This is the right one.
That is correct, and it does reflect an added teacher with a larger group, for example, but we do have a couple of grades.
So I do have some concerns that hopefully we'll get some more clarity on, because, you know, especially at the kindergarten level, you know, just that aspect of it.
Yeah, so it's actually some of the other primary grades that actually, potentially. What I would say to the board, the 25th meeting, which is still two weeks prior to the start of school, is such a better timeframe to look at those numbers. We don't even have office staff in, so I think there's going to be some adjustments made to these numbers, but...
I just want to put it on there that we see it, there's a concern, so we can just do that.
Yeah, we should be paying attention, and the closer we get.
And then my other point is, especially as we're going to be outreach to parents about survey, I still would like some closure from Dr. Kablinsky on the survey that happened of students. I am concerned from a policy perspective, I know we went back and forth over the summer, but let's...
So it is actually on our agenda for our administrative council, which meets next week, a week prior, and Dr. Kablinsky is prepared to report out on the 25th. She was actually prepared for some statements today, but we kind of moved the topics for obvious reasons on reopening.
Is there a refund policy on these books?
I take no responsibility for the state still sending those books, you're simply getting the state book.
This is crazy, they're...
I'm not sure why they don't send us a PDF and download it and to do that, so.
It's such a waste of tax dollars.
Do somebody want to use them for their monitor?
So I have a motion and a second to table the rest of this and adjourn.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Oh, I just told them.
I made a recommendation.
We're not talking about TRAIN.
Well, no, we can talk about TRAIN when we have Cara here. The TRAIN, the 95% done thing? The 95% done thing, yes.
In some aspects, yeah, I would just, I respect, I mean...
Then we just tell the audience where we are, because she stayed.
Oh.
I can do that off...
Yeah, quick, yeah.
...scale, I just didn't want to go through her report, I felt she could do that appropriately.
No, I asked, I actually asked.
So we have spent a great deal of time with boiler systems, the univents, and a multitude of environmentally friendly but also ventilation issues to address to upgrade that. We started it before COVID, I'd like to say I knew it was coming and could predict this, but unfortunately, this board supported a $6 million project, its primary focus has been these three schools, to upgrade airflow and air quality. You'll see a lot of the trucks and mechanisms in place, we are anywhere between 85 and 95% complete on that project. Mrs. Lee's provided a detailed response in this board, and she'll do it on the 25th as well. But we are very excited that it takes on the facilities aspect, that I know some parents were concerned about, in relation to being sure that this is a safe and healthy place.
Now, the timing couldn't have been better for us. We really did start it pre-COVID, with all the best intentions, but never realizing...